Good evening, welcome to this meeting of the County Council. The Council meets here at City Hall on the second and fourth Mondays of every week. Please note the Council meeting, although it is open to the public here at City Hall, and also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and their website. Now we begin the revenue meeting with the touch of the flag, all of our members. Pledge of allegiance to the county's citizens. To the people of the county, for which they stand, one patient, not a guy, in the physical, with the reading of the state's law. Thank you. If there's any questions you want, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other devices you might have with you, in case you have a lot of security issues. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information pack of the Council's meeting are available online in the city website. Copies of the agenda are here in the room, private room for anybody who is present. We can begin our meetings with any presentations that are on the schedule. And one thing that was always on our agenda is presentation from McDaniel College. It's Dr. Julia Jasmine to office, the president of the college. She made the commitment to us that she would send a member of her senior staff to the council meetings at every meeting to share what news of what's happening up on the hill and take back to the college community news of what's happening in the city. Well, please join with us tonight, Dean Vicki Mazer and Dean Braden, Special State. We need to thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me, and I'm happy to be here to make a short report on some of the happenings that are going on up on the hill. We have, as you know, embarked on a strategic plan, and one of the major initiatives of that strategic plan is to look at new programs. And those new programs that we started to begin to look at several years ago are coming to fruition in regards to district review that we have. Four new programs that are going to be coming on board. One is an early childhood education program that will begin in the fall of 2024. The second is a Bachelor of Science in Nursing program that will begin in the fall of 2024. The third is a Master of Science in occupational therapy that is slated to begin in summer of 2026. And the fourth is a Master of Science in traditional pathology, slated to begin in the spring of 2027. All four programs have made it through state approval at the Maryland Higher Education Commission level, and we are beginning to work at implementation. And as part of that is my being here to communicate with the community as well about our plans moving forward. All of these programs were developed through a process where we identified needs both across the state of Maryland and here in our own region and our local community, particularly those who are in healthcare related to workforce shortages that we're experiencing nationally and of course, here in our own local community. So we're happy to report that, and if you have any questions, there'll be more information coming out, of course, as those programs are implemented. I'm happy to ask if there are any questions that you think.
Right, thank you. Any questions for Dean Mazer? Oh, thank you once again, so again, thanks, Dr. Jasmine, for the continued collaboration. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes of the meeting of the Mayor and Common Council on January eighth, from the work session on January sixteenth, from the regular meeting on January twenty-second, and then from the work session on January twenty-second. They have a motion to approve on the minutes to approve, Mr. President. The motion by Mr. Cavaci and the second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor of approving minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
If they nay, the eyes seem to have it, the eyes have it, and the minutes are approved. Consent counts, we have one item on the consent calendar this evening. It's a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Mr. President.
And a motion by Mr. Hoff and a second by Mr. Cavaci to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have it, the eyes have it. Consent counts. Committee of appointments, we have two appointments from the mayor this evening. What the mayor discussing with, Dr. Becker?
Sure, so there are two appointments this evening to the Board of Elections. Mr. Robert Peoples served on the Board of Elections during the last election cycle two years ago, and he is, will be reappointed to that hopefully this evening. And then Mrs. McGuire served as an election judge during the last election cycle, and I sent her information out to the council earlier or later last week. Everyone seemed to be in agreement that she was a good fit for the Board of Elections Committee, and so those are the two appointments that are in front of you this evening.
All right, thank you, Dr. Becker, you've all received the information packet on Mr. Peoples and Ms. McGuire. They have a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment.
I'll move to confirm, Mr. President.
The motion by Mr. Cavaci is now second.
Second.
The second by Ms. Gilbert, is there any discussion? If there are none, we'll move on to a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have it, the eyes have it, and the appointments are confirmed. Thank you, Dr. Becker. Now it's time for the reports from the mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much this evening. First, I would like to thank the council for the action they just took in approving two appointments to the Board of Elections. As you know, we appoint this election, or this Board of Election a year before the next election, and the next election, which will be in May 2025. Since our last meeting, we met three weeks ago, it's been busy. I, along with most of the council, attended the Carroll County Commissioners' Griffin House, at the County Office Building on J. V. Run 23rd, where we met and networked with local business owners, with other elected officials. Outside of the meeting with the commissioners, I've attended as a city liaison to Magic, their board meeting during the last two weeks, and then also spent the evening of the 25th of January with the Orioles Birdland Caravan event that landed at Wise Markets for a couple hours, which was really enjoyable. I've lost numerous meetings with other downtown organizations and residents, which has kept me a little busy over the last couple weeks. I also wanted to report that I worked with Aaron Benavito at McDaniel College to supply a letter of welcome to prospective incoming students and families, introducing them to downtown Westminster and providing a warm welcome. And this came about from the council meeting, our last council meeting we had, where Heidi Regal spoke about the prospective student events and the incoming student events and on the weekends, and I contacted Aaron after that meeting and suggested that, as mayor, I was more than happy to write a letter to include in the packets for the families that were coming that weekend to welcome them to McDaniel from the city itself. And so that I know was going out, I think it went out last weekend. There was an undergraduate, it was students who had already been accepted, I think. So I think that was included in last weekend, and will be included in other packets going out. So, and that sums up my report.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Becker. Moving on to reports from the council committees and liaisons. Usually we begin with the Carroll County Arts Council, but Director of the Mayor, Mr. Bayhoff, is with us this evening. Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoff.
Nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff. Finance committee, I will report that we are in discussion with the staff about budget and the schedule for our budget meetings with the finance committee, as well as for the work sessions from the council. We can share all of that, if you haven't already gotten it, it's very soon. Have to make sure you all can get that on your schedule, but we are moving along with that and looking to amend our budget this year. Yeah, personnel committee, I have nothing to report on that. Public safety committee, Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 30th, officers of patrol squad being located and apprehended three individuals who are from New York and Florida who had just committed an organized theft involving a large quantity of skincare products at the Alpha Beauty Store on Clifton Boulevard. Chief, compliments again, it seems like you guys for the past year or two have busted up a number of these rings, and are in other communities doing this. And I don't know if they just don't care, or if they're just not as good as your guys, but this seems to be, what, third, fourth, maybe fifth time in the past year or two that you've caught one of these rings and actually made apprehensions. So congratulations, please pass on to the guys, that's a great job, and we're very appreciative.
Well, thank you.
On February 9th, new lateral police officer Jared Horvath completed his five-week Maryland comparative compliance training at the Maryland Police Trainings Commission Center. Officer Horvath will now begin his field training before being assigned to work solo on Patrol Bureau. Officer Horvath brings seven years of municipal policing experience with him, which is wonderful. And then more good news on the personnel front in the police department on February 9th. Maryland Certified Police Officer Jeffrey Fabry accepted a job. Officer Officer Fabry will start with the Westminster Police Department on February 27th. He brings seven years of Maryland municipal policing experience with him, so great jobs. Start to fill up a little bit, and we've got how many still in the academy?
There are about four police, I think.
And how far along are they at this point?
The ones in the Sheriff's Office Academy graduate March 28th, and then the one at the Predax Academy graduates May 7th, probably.
Outstanding, thank you, chief, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Public Works, Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, I have a couple things. Solar-powered crosswalk enhancement project for East Main Street and West Main Street and Pennsylvania Avenue has began. The enhancements at the crosswalks consist of a push-button activated flashing LED light bar, a spotlight to illuminate the crosswalk at night, so hopefully that will create a much more safer environment crossing the street. There will be fourteen total crosswalks being upgraded over the next couple weeks. And the project everyone knows about is the Main Street Water Main Project has resumed. A total of five isolation valves were installed in the overnight hours of Thursday, February 8th. These valves were installed for more control of water shut-off and less outage time for the remaining of the project. And that is all I have for Public Works at this moment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And please also give us a report for Recreation and Parks.
Keep going. The Recreation and Parks Department's Adaptive Recreation Program continues to gain in popularity. On Saturday, January 20th, approximately thirty people attended the winter ball. The next event held was on Saturday, February 3rd, was a Valentine's Day themed brunch entitled Besties and Brunch. The event sold out at capacity with twenty-five people attending. Besties and Brunch provided attendees and their caregivers time to socialize on this block, creating fun Valentine's Day core and enjoying delicious pancakes, complete with a toppings bar. The next event scheduled for March 22nd is a karaoke party. Registration is open now and going well, the second session has now been added. And summer camp registration opened February 5th. Currently, all eleven weeks of summer camp are almost half-full. So we'll have more shortly for employment for summer camp and all the pool jobs that are going to be coming around the corner, but that's all I have for Parks and Rec at the moment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And for Technology Committee, once again, Mr. Hoffs. Thanks this evening. Move on now to council comments and discussion. This is the time on council numbers, have the opportunity to share your thoughts or concerns, or information on anything else. On the agenda, you have Mr. Cavaci.
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Cavaci, Ms. Gilbert.
I have nothing. The mayor already spoke about his foundation of the council, which was absolutely a great event, great networking, and it was just great to talk to everyone. Outside of that, I don't have any other comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff.
I have nothing this evening.
All right, thanks. Move on to all. Ordinance is the resolution, three items under ordinance of essential reservations. First, introduction of ordinance number 24-01, on the right-of-way abandonment, ordinance of the mayor and common council to save here, vacant, abandoning, and closing deep plating, and unconstructed rights of way, extending general northeast from upriver in the vicinity of its intersection with Romwell Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute a pre-pain deed reflecting said abandonment to the Carroll County Board of Education. Mr. Devoe.
Thank you, and good evening. On January 7th, 2021, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved Site Plan S 2023 for the new East Middle School. The entire school site, as outlined in the staff report, contains multiple parcels, which include areas previously dedicated for future public roadways or rights-of-way. To accomplish the redevelopment of the property for the new school required work to be done within these rights-of-way, and as a condition of approval of the site plan required that the multiple parcels be consolidated into a single parcel. The applicant or the Board of Education has submitted a consolidation plat to create the one parcel. However, two of the rights-of-way are currently owned by the city, and the plat cannot be processed until the mayor and common council approve conveyance of its interest in the rights-of-way. At the time of the rights-of-way to be abandoned or conveyed were dedicated to the city, the intent was to extend certain city roadways to the northeast. However, with the construction of Baltimore Boulevard, such roadway extension is no longer viable. Furthermore, as depicted in the staff report and Site Plan S 2123, steep slopes existed within the subject rights-of-way prior to development of East Middle School, and then these steep slopes were extended with the grading and development of the East Middle School due to the constraints of building the new school while maintaining the old school on-site until such time it could be demolished. The steep slopes existed and were existing and approved make it difficult to, impossible to extend the city roadway within these rights-of-way. In addition, there are no properties other than the East Middle School that would benefit from extending the city roadways within the rights-of-way, which they are not looking to accomplish at any time. With that, staff recommends that the mayor and common council introduce ordinance number 2024-01 for the conveyance of its interest in real property and refer ordinance number 2024-01 to a future mayor and common council meeting for approval. And that completes my report. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. Devoe. It's got a motion on this, there are a motion on introductions.
I'll move to introduce, Mr. President. Second.
The motion to introduce ordinance number 2024 by Mr. Cavaci, second by Mr. Hoff. Are there any questions for Mr. Devoe, or any discussion?
Mr. President, considering they just finished paving and installing the six basketball courts exactly where this roadway is, I think you'd be quite upset with this because of the road there. I think this is a good move.
Will you let you use the basketball, please, Mr. Cavaci?
Just follow the skill of fence, I think.
They've already put them in, I just saw them on the.
They just paved them.
You have one else? Very good, all right, so going on to further discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, this is just for introduction, approval will come later. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have it, the eyes have it, and we will bring this back if we have the time. Thank you, Mr. Devoe. Next item is introduction of ordinance number 2024-02, MUI BCCDB and CB, this is text with a number. And ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, amendment chapter 164, zoning and subdivision of land of the code of the city of Westminster, to amend Article 7A, MUI, mixed-use infill zone. Section 164-39.2, Article 8, the Business Zone, Section 164-41, Article 8A, CB Central Commerce Zone, Section 164-45.2, Article 8B, DV Business Zone, Section 164-45.8, and Article 9, CB Central Business Zone, Section 164-47, permitting existing permitted uses, deleted existing uses, and add new permitted uses. Mr. Devoe.
Thank you. On January 16th, 2024, the owners of a proposed bookstore contacted Community Plan Development regarding their wish to operate a bookstore use at 19 Liberty Street. The property is owned CB Central Business Zone. Currently, bookstores is identified as a permitted use only in the mixed-use infill zone and the NC neighborhood commercial zone. However, bookstore is not listed as a permitted use in the CB zone. Standard zoning administrative practice requires that if a use is specifically listed in the zoning ordinance, such as bookstore, as it's listed in the city zoning ordinance, as an allowed use in the mixed-use infill zone and the NC neighborhood commercial zone, then that use must also be listed in the zoning ordinance in the zoning district in which the use is proposed to be commenced, in this case, the CB Central Business Zone. Furthermore, the zoning administrator does not have the authority to add a new use to a zoning district or to determine that two distinct uses listed in the zoning ordinance are the same use, such as bookstore being a gift and jewelry shop. So therefore, to add a new use in the zoning district requires a tax amendment by the mayor and common council. In lieu of the bookstore submitting the tax amendment application, city administration and community planning development staff introduced the concept of amending the zoning ordinance to allow bookstore to the, in the downtown zoning districts to the mayor and common council at its January 22nd, 2024 work session. While working on the bookstore tax amendment, city administration and community planning development began researching uses permitted in the downtown zoning districts and B Business Zone. Staff has identified several uses that should be amended, deleted, or added as part of the initial bookstore tax amendment in an effort to alleviate future downtown use issues similar to the bookstore use and the recent art gallery and studio use. Zoning administration notes that bookstores does not include an adult bookstore as an adult bookstore is an adult entertainment activity use. Staff recommends that the proposed ordinance 2402 be introduced for consideration by the mayor and common council and be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its review and recommendation to the mayor and common council. That completes my report, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe, they have a motion on this.
I'll make a motion for the introduction of ordinance number 2024-02. Second.
All right, thank you, it's been a motion by Mr. Hoff, and a second by Mr. Cavaci. Any questions for Mr. Devoe, or any discussion?
Mr. Hoff, Council President. I'm glad we're doing this, I'm also glad that staff took the initiative to kind of listen to the zoning code and kind of update some other uses. I think that's a smart way to do that, because eventually you want to update our zoning code, but for right now, this is a good step to kind of, you know, be a little bit more business-friendly with the community. So I appreciate the effort to look at some of the other uses and update that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a better?
Just to add on to Councilmember Hoff's comments that, you know, looking at the other permitted uses that you have listed in this ordinance as well, I think it's a very smart move, and also I'd like to thank the the Planning and Economic Development Group for moving on this rather quickly since our last work session. And I'm sure it's appreciated, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert, did you?
No, I'm good, everybody said what I was going to say.
I just had one question, Mr. Devoe, so, you know, as I read through the list, the uses all make a lot of sense to me. The question is, in the zoning, in the planning and zoning book, is there, are there standard definitions for all of these? In other words, you know, what, how, the future date, and some question of mine, how is there any sort of, I mean, is it by interpretation by zoning director, by permission, or is there a definition that exists somewhere?
Best practice is, you typically would have a definition specific to a use. We do define several uses in the ordinance, but if it's not listed or not defined, it does fall to the zoning administrator to make that interpretation a determination of the definition. We use, we use planning practice, other jurisdictions, as well as the dictionary to come up with that definition.
A lot of people still use the dictionary.
Something fifteen years.
No doubt.
Something that is not included on this list.
Anyone else wish to be heard tonight? All right, thank you, move on to a vote, this is the introduction. And we come here, we'll go on to the planning commissioner, come back to us at some point in the future. All those in favor of introduction of ordinance number 2024-02, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the eyes seem to have it, the eyes have it, and the witnesses introduce.
Yep.
The third item is introduction of annexation resolution 24-02, 411 Malcolm Drive, Cross Creek Enterprises LLC, Annexation Number 79, a resolution enlarging the corporate boundaries of the city of Westminster. By annexing into the city, certain property containing plus or minus .6950 acres, continues to integrate into the city's existing corporate boundaries, consisting of real property located at 411 Malcolm Drive, Westminster, Maryland, 21157, also identified as tax account number 07-007884, map 0046, grid 0015, parcel 0100, and comprising plus or minus .3144 acres and plus or minus .23806 acres of state highway administration property, containing a portion of Maryland Route 97, Malcolm Drive. Mr. Devoe.
Thank you. Cross Creek Enterprises LLC, the petitioner, pursuant to the Annotated Code of Maryland, has petitioned the mayor and common council of the city of Westminster to annex approximately .3144 acres of 4, at 411 Malcolm Drive, owned by the petitioner, into the corporate boundaries of the city. In addition, this annexation includes approximately .3806 acres of right-of-way, owned by the state highway administration. This portion of right-of-way is located along Malcolm Drive abutting the city boundary at 404 Malcolm Drive. This is a property we recently annexed. The annexation area is approximately combined .6950 acres and a Zone C2 Commercial Medium Intensity District under the Carroll County zoning ordinance. The petitioner is requesting that the property be Zone B Business Zone under the city's zoning ordinance. This is a comparable zone to the C2. The petitioner is proposing to redevelop the existing building located at 411 Malcolm Drive for retail use, which will require additional water and sewer allocations. Pursuant to the Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan and city's water and sewer allocation policy, property owners of property located outside the city limits but inside the water service area that are eligible for annexation under state law, who desire to connect to the city's water, public water system, or require additional allocation, must be annexed into the city to be eligible to apply for water allocation. With that, staff recommends that the mayor and common council introduce Resolution Number 2402 for annexation, allowing the annexation process to begin. That completes my report, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe. They have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the introduction of annexation resolution 2402.
All right, thank you. If there are seconds.
Okay.
The motion by Mr. Hoff, and a second by Ms. Gilbert. During the discussion, any questions?
I do have a question.
All right, the mayor first.
What is currently at that property now?
I understand it was, it uses an office use, I'm not sure what type of office. It's been vacant, there are building permits submitted by the property owner that are on hold until such time annexation occurs.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Hoff.
Mr. Devoe, I was wondering, it used to be a real estate office, I know that, I'm familiar with the site, I've been there before. So they're looking to do a retail use. It's an awfully narrow site, I was just curious, what kind of retail use are they looking to be there?
Spectacularly, I believe it's more of a, maybe a tobacco hut type of use at this location, whether that is the case or not now. It has been some time since we met with the petitioner as to the use, but it would be an allowed use.
But that would have to go to, you know, they would have to submit a site plan, that'll go to planning and zoning, I'm assuming, if they're tearing down a building, or would it be a simplified site plan, depending on what they're doing?
Simplify, they're not tearing down the building, they're just doing interior renovations. I believe they have enough parking on site, just in cursory review, so it would be a simplified site plan, most likely.
Got you, okay, so likely would not go to planning and zoning.
Yes.
Questions? Okay.
Mr. Provost, so they're going to need additional water?
Yes. When the office used to retail required, by square footage, required additional water for that use. I'm sorry, I don't recall, off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
But that makes sense, smash.
Yes, yeah, they would, they would not be allocated water until such time they were annexed.
Thank you.
You have one else, Mr. Devoe? Any questions? All right, so this is just introduction only. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The eyes seem to have it, the eyes have it, and it's, well, it's, annexation resolution is increased. You wouldn't know about this.
Yes.
Mr. Devoe.
Ms. Gilbert.
When we, when we visited that property, and we didn't know what the, what the actual values are for that building?
All right. Moving on, next item is unfinished business, there's no unfinished business, of which, I'm, where does anybody have any unfinished business? Uh, moving on, next item is unfinished business. There's no unfinished business of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business? If none, move on to new business. We have one item of new business. Approval of a way to competitive procurement for good cause on the city of Westminster Code, chapter thirty six, Secure and Contract subsection thirty six dash four specific regulations for court resurfacing at City Park by ATC Corporation in amount sixty six thousand eight hundred twenty five. I mean, you heard it.
Yes, that you made. The item that you have before you tonight is for the resurfacing of City Park tennis courts, which will create a set of six dedicated pickleball courts on one side of the park and two full-size tennis courts on the other side of the park, providing a solution that will benefit both user groups. To accommodate future predicted growth in the sport of pickleball, the full-size tennis courts will also have pickleball lines added to them so that when the tennis courts are not in use for tennis, temporary pickleball nets can be set up. The tennis courts can easily be converted into pickleball courts this way. Uh, this would create ten pickleball courts that can meet the high demand for pickleball programming such as leagues, lessons, and tournaments. During this process, three companies were contacted to provide estimates for the repair and resurfacing of the City Park tennis courts, Mid-Atlantic Tennis Sports, Sports Systems, and ATC Corporation. Mid-Atlantic Tennis Court never responded to the city's inquiry and Sports Systems stated they do not work in the Westminster area. However, ATC Corporation responded and provided a reasonable estimate, fiddling sixty six thousand eight hundred and twenty five dollars, which is attached, a mere compensator. Further research indicates an absence of other qualified firms to complete this highly specialized court repair and resurfacing. Considering these circumstances, the Recreation and Parks Department is requesting to waive the competitive procurement for a good cause and to approve a contract with ATC Corporation. A waiver of the competitive bidding process is being requested for two reasons. One, we have ten, we attempted to obtain quotes from multiple businesses, but only one company, ATC responded. And two, the courts are in immediate need of repair, and if the resurfacing is not accomplished this spring, the repairs will have to be postponed until the fall. Funding for this project is allocated in the fiscal year twenty four capital projects fund. With that, staff recommends that the mayor and council waive competitive bidding for good cause under subsection thirty six dash four to repair and resurface the city tennis, the City Park tennis courts.
I think it's Rupert. So to recap, we attempted to do a competitive bidding process, but we're unable to find enough for objective competition. Right, now the motion to approve the waiver for competitive procurement, good cause?
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver.
A motion by Ms. Gilbert, is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Hoff. Any discussion or any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kabachi.
How much is budgeted?
The amount that is listed here, sixty six thousand, um, eight hundred and twenty five dollars.
So we, does it happen to budget exactly what the bid came in?
There was a larger project budgeted of which is being offset by grant funding. Um, it's the, uh, restroom renovation for City Park. So, um, because our grant exceeded the anticipated amount that we requested, then this amount is available, uh, in the capital projects fund.
Mr. Kabachi, if you give me once, I cannot verify it though. Oh yeah, this was the exact amount. Mr. DePoe.
Ms. Gilbert.
Um, Ms. Gilbert, do you have any idea when, um, the work may start to the idea? And I would assume that we will let lots of people know way ahead of time when that construction is happening?
Yes, uh, we anticipate starting as soon as we can, uh, proceed with signed contracts. They're, they're ready to start in the spring, whatever.
Oh, okay. All right. Very good. But I was, presented was a question of when that was gonna occur just a couple days ago. I'll update everyone.
So, Mr. President, I'm just gonna give you this.
I, I knew we were gonna do that.
I could understand how the budgeted amounts exactly with this bid came out.
It's not a bid, so we are asking the council to waive the competitive bid requirements. Um, we don't believe we're gonna get a better price if we go to bid, and if we do go to bid, we have to wait until the fall.
You got an estimate from ATC, right?
This is an estimate, but it's the amount that they'll, that they're going to offer us, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it, um, it is that amount, eighty or sixty, sixty six, eight twenty five, is what their estimate is?
I believe is what we used to prepare the budget.
Last year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That makes more sense.
So they're, they're holding it at that.
So they, okay, then you went and got this estimate prior to submitting, okay, that makes a lot more sense. Otherwise, I thought we had some shenanigans going on.
Come on now.
And I do have one more question.
Right.
Which side is the pickleball courts gonna go on? Closest to Main Street or closest to Rosehill?
Closest to Main Street.
It's getting a lot of noise.
So closest to Mr. Kabachi, you don't think?
Not me. Like, hey, you're, you're on the other end of the line. Yeah.
Understand. All right, any further discussions or questions? If there are none, we'll move on to the votes. All those in favor of approving the waiver, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes and nays have it, and the witnesses introduce. Yep, all right, um, we'll move on now to departmental reports. Ms. Simms, please answer that one.
Thank you, sir. And as we mentioned at the last council meeting, we had, uh, interns from McDaniel for the month of January, and I received some feedback from McDaniel. They interviewed the students. Um, and I wanted to share the following feedback, which was a snippet out of larger, out of the conversation. Um, my, here's a quote from a student. My intern supervisor made me feel like my voice mattered. Another student stated, this internship helped me identify career paths that interest me most and functional areas I may engage with less moving forward. And, and then the report McDaniel said that the, it's not a report, but the feedback I got said, uh, the emphasis on a supportive, empowering, and developmental environment fostered by the supervisors is a testament to the success of the program. Um, we had department heads who were supervisors for the interns this year. It might not happen in future years, but we tried to move very quickly in an attempt to assist McDaniel. Um, that's a very heavy lift for our department head, um, and it was a very unique opportunity for those interns to work directly with these department heads. Um, so I just want to thank all of the staff who were involved in that, um, and it sounds like it was a really great opportunity for the McDaniel students, um, and we certainly got a lot out of it as well. All right, I won't keep you waiting anymore unless you have any questions about that. We'll move on to the Recreation and Parks Department. Ms. Gruber?
Yes, good evening. Uh, just to report in on pool membership sales, we are going very well. To date, we have sold a hundred and twenty-two primary memberships, equalling five hundred and sixteen individual pool classes. Approximately twenty-five percent of these memberships are new to the Westminster Municipal Pool and have not been pool members in the past. In comparison to pool membership sales at this time last year, only fifty-two primary memberships were sold for a total of two hundred and thirteen classes.
Oh, that's a bad.
And the only other report I have this evening is to report in on our registration for Celtic cancer. Uh, at this time, we have over six hundred registered runners, uh, for the Celtic cancer, and we are light years ahead of our registration benchmark from last year at this time, so we are very excited.
Is it a point K, point five K registration or how many?
I, uh, I believe that every single one of you is registered today, so they're going very well. I was gonna say, we got this new registration.
It's not a point one, it is a point five, right?
Point five, yes.
I think it was point one. Yeah, I know, we have a pool. It's a run rate once again.
Absolutely.
Okay, hearing no more questions, we'll move on to the Public Works Department. Mr. Dick.
Thank you, Ms. Simms. Also, keep it short. Uh, we're working on a lot of, uh, early spring maintenance stuff right now, so plenty of problems we're going through, cutting back tree limbs, cleaning garbage out, all things to be there. Um, also taking care of some longer landscaping things, I think that, uh, medium one center street there, bottom mall that, uh, needed new stands, and we took care of that. Uh, the other big thing right now, we're preparing for whatever comes tomorrow morning. Uh, our guys are coming in early in the morning, and we'll be ready for whatever new station we listen to, that's whatever they want. Uh, so that's all my.
Good job, class.
Are there any questions for the public works? Right now, we will move on to the IT Director, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Uh, let's keep mine short. Um, we've been busy the normal day-to-day. We've been looking at budget ready for this year twenty five, and we'll improve a lot of our backend policies and tools, the security products we use, just tighten orders up and come up with some more ideas how we do this better. So I have a, have your first?
Are there any questions for IT Department? If there are none, we'll move on to the planning department. DePoe.
Uh, on February the sixth, the board of zoning appeals approved case twenty four oh one. It's an application for special exceptions for version dwelling use at forty-eight West George Street. On the seventh, historic district commission reviewed the proposed demolition of a structure at thirty Carroll Street that's currently in use by Shepherd's staff. They're still looking at the demolition plans and potential development of that site. They also discussed its implement, its implementation plan and preparation for the nation's twenty-fiftieth anniversary, the Carroll County History Day, which is February the twenty-fourth, and the recruitment of a new commission member, which I believe we're getting close to. Um, on February the fifteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission is tentatively scheduled to review the twenty twenty-three City of Westminster Planning Annual Report to introduce a local map amendment, amending the zoning map to part rezone parcel F one B. This is north of eight forty-two Little Town Pike. It's the All About You Salon and Barbershop. It's a property just north to that. Uh, from the IR industrial restricted zones to be business zone, the intent is that this little, little property, which, um, very small in nature, would be used for parking for potential redevelopment of the All About You Salon site. Uh, there's, uh, planning for Dunkin' Donuts at that location. Um, and also, they are discussing the Planning and Zoning Commission's policies and procedures. I also want to point out the city was awarded the facade improvement program grant of fifty thousand from the Department of Housing and Community Development. This is intended to, to, uh, assist downtown businesses while improving the outside appearances of businesses, uh, the buildings and facades and facilities, and that completes my report.
Ms. Simms?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, is it, so is that a grant program or is it a, um?
A grant program, uh, fifty thousand, so it's a matching, uh, whatever the applicant puts into the property, we match that out of that fifty thousand until it's exhausted. Uh, a lot of those funds are already accounted for, the projects already occurring downtown or have been approved for downtown.
We use that, uh, revolving loan program for facade improvements. I guess it's been something, the Westminster Town Center infiltration actually administered, it's something.
It's a hundred years.
Uh, you know, it's kind of, it's very complicated, because I asked. But anyway, I'm wondering if it's worth looking at that again and seeing if it's nineteen. I mean, it was a good program. We got, I mean, a lot of people use it tech. I really appreciate, you know, if it's worth exploring.
We can look into that. That was a little bit before my time, I believe.
And, and couple predecessors.
Yes. We still have the tax credit program too, in case anybody's listening, that, for any work downtown or an historic building or property can receive tax credits, not only from the city, but from the state as well.
Mr. President, this question, what's the cap on, on that program, the size? It doesn't maximum, right?
It is no, it's a minimum. You have to, it has to be over five thousand dollars being spent for improvement. There is no maximum. Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, we owe you fifty thousand.
Yes.
And when that's gone, that's it?
That's good, until next year. This is, every year we request money. We asked for a hundred thousand this year, which was what we budgeted for, but unfortunately, we only received fifty thousand.
Any more questions for Mr. DePoe? Right now, we'll move on to the Finance Department.
Thank you, Ms. Simms. Good evening, mayor and council. Um, finance has been partnering with information technology to evaluate a new ERP system for the city. Um, we are going to be pleased to, um, make some recommendations in the very near future. We've been happy with several programs that we've seen. Um, as President Pecorera already mentioned, we are very deep into the fiscal twenty-five budget planning process and look forward to presenting that budget in the near future. That's the end of my report.
Are there any questions from the Finance Department? If there are none, we will move on to the Housing Department. Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to take this opportunity to update the mayor and council on our efforts to clean up our waiting list. Last week, we sent out, I think it was last Thursday and Friday, we sent out over eight hundred letters to people on our waiting list. Some of them have already started to respond, uh, so at the end of this, they have until, maybe March eighth, to respond to us. If they do not respond by that time, then we take them off the list and then we'll start with them. So I have to.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brown?
Mr. President, what, what was, what was the letter? What did it say?
Get back to us if you're still interested. Let's deal with the letter, sir.
Yeah, the, the letter just basically told them you've been on the waiting list, uh, that if anything has changed, let us know. Do you still want to be on the waiting list and still want us to try to, uh, to house you, then let us know. If you do not hear back from them by the, uh, by March eighth, then they automatically come off of us. And the letter tells them that as well.
Thanks.
Ms. Simms, or Mr. President?
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Brown, is there any exceptions to reasons people he not respond to you in that two or three week time? Say they were in the hospital, in a nursing home, et cetera, et cetera, but they're on the waiting list. Will there be exceptions for that? Just in case the people would not.
If in our extenuating circumstances, uh, that they were not able to respond, then we'll take that into consideration.
So it would seem to me that by the very nature of the fact that these folks are on a list like this, that their housing situation really is, is in flux. So how do we know that we've got a good address for folks? I mean, do they have an obligation to keep you apprised of what their current address is, because they don't remain on the list or how does that work?
They have the, an obligation to let us know if their address changes. Uh, sometimes they change without letting us know. Uh, mail will come back to us either undelivered or the, or with a forwarding address. If there's a forwarding address, then we will send it to the forwarding, to that, to that particular address. There are people who, like, we got a call, a couple of calls, and they people said, just take me off because I've already found places to live, other places I don't long the need to be on your list. So, um, we'll have that, but we try to take into consideration that if they haven't, you know, let us know that they changed the address and we get a forwarding address back, we'll send it to a new address. Uh, if it's undeliverable, that we have no way of getting in touch with them.
I guess, in general, electronic is not even a option.
No.
Thank you.
Hearing no further questions, we will move on to the Department. DePoe.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Just, uh, two short things. Um, a reminder that we sent out a save the date for April twenty-fourth for our annual awards ceremony. We'll be holding that at the Best Westerns. And we received a nice email today from the Carroll County Public School Coordinator of School Security, Brian Elliott, letting us know what a great job our property specialist, Will Parks, was doing coordinating our school access card process with him. It's good to receive that feedback. That's all I have. If there's any questions?
Any questions for the chief? That concludes the departmental reports.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Simms. We have, uh, that takes us to our final item, the citizens' comments. And we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that they have suggested or any other city issues. If a citizen is not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns via email at comments@westminstermv.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Uh, we ask the commenters, please include their address and phone number with their comments that are sent by email. Well, now invite comments from anyone who is present here this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts and opinions with the mayor and council. Our role at this point is to listen to the comments and respond as appropriate after consultation with staff and attorney. Uh we ask everyone to please be brief and keep your remarks to plebeons. Now, is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to be heard? Please give us your name and address for the record. For me to hear. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Michelle Jefferson, four sixteen Sycamore Avenue, Westminster, five seven. Those, the folks here are my neighbors. I would like to let those of them speak. We have a letter that we got from the mayor this afternoon. It is from the Mount Lees delegation. And I'm not real thrilled about a tobacco shop. Now, there's another piece of property that is being annexed by the city by you introduced tonight. That's on the other end of Old Baltimore. That is me stopping in on us like this. Which we can't, you know, I'm tired of every time it turns over, finding out something different is coming and nobody has told us. So please, we need to have a discussion about the properties being developed and annexed through the cities. Whether they are being annexed by the people who own them or encouraged by you guys to be annexed. We're trapped like rats. We're not thrilled about it. So these folks here tonight are going to give it to you in their words. You already know how I feel. So please, folks, take time, three minutes.
My name is Emily Fox and I live at five oh four Lucas Avenue in Westminster, Maryland, five seven. Um members of the council, you have received a letter from my boss, my boss, I mean, who will probably be different later. I wanted to express my concerns at the behavior that's been shared with us as neighbors in the city of Westminster. As was previously stated, we're neighbors. We're being entrapped by one of the decisions that this council is making. One of our primary concerns is the safety that some of these may develop in our property, even though they are within zoning. But then a bit, there have been a lot of decisions that have been made, but we're not being informed of them, that there's no consideration being made to that historic area that we have. My house was built nineteen twenty seven. I have a big family car. I'm sorry, I will take you right now. Um but the amount of traffic that my street gets since the pandemic has been lifted. And since the Stonegate development has gone in on the other side, it severely impacted my ability to garden. I find very relaxing and that helps with a lot of the nerve pain that I experienced as a result of that accident more than two years ago. I'm still on ongoing treatment, so. So the prospects of a fast food restaurant or any other kind of significant traffic turnover coming through my neighborhood, coming through my streets is a threat to me and my ability to maintain a good quality of life as much as I can. So I would implore you to reconsider what kinds of development go on at either end of Old Baltimore, on either side of the community. Consider the families that live here, the elderly that you take care of, such as our neighbor. Miss by herself and she doesn't have a lot of means, but we do what we can to help her. So just take that under consideration, reach out to us. We're, we're listening. We want to have conversations with you. Tell ideas for how we can help make Westminster better as a way, for as part of this community, whether or not we're zoned in or we're part of the county or right next door and we're available.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I clarify for the rest? Did you say you're at five oh four Lucas? What's for, all right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
May I?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Uh my name is Christine Crowe. I've been a resident of Buckland, New York for forty two years. Uh my second home in this neighborhood is located at the corner of Old Baltimore Road and Willow Avenue. Uh Old Baltimore Road serves as a school bus route. Your children are picked up and dropped off three times a day. Adding any business such as a fast food restaurant, which is estimated to bring upwards of three thousand plus new cars into that neighborhood is a real risk to our smallest pedestrians. We have no sidewalks. We've got narrow avenues. And already the highway traffic shortcuts through Old Baltimore and our tree streets to avoid the two traffic lights on one forty and ninety seven when reaching a Westminster pipe. We do have children. There are people there and we just ask for a little consideration when large traffic projects are being considered for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I didn't catch the address for that. I'm sorry.
Five oh three Willow Avenue.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um my name is Jennifer Satorius and I am a resident of five two seven Willow Avenue. Um before I get started, uh I would like to just wait a moment. I see many familiar faces here from our neighborhood. Can um you all stand in support to show if you're here to discuss opposition? I don't even know if you're hearing that. I don't believe.
From all of these voices tonight.
Uh but we just wanted to show our support and uh many of us share the same feelings. So um thank you all. I'm gonna, I made a statement so that I could try to keep things brief. Um so I'll read from that. Uh as a neighbor of the tree streets, I would like to express my opposition to a fast food restaurant with a drive through at Old Baltimore Road and Route one forty in Westminster. I share the same concerns that my neighbors are expressing this evening, with two of the largest being centered around safety concerns um due to the specific location and traffic impact with additional harms for our neighborhood. There are already at least fifteen fast food type establishments with drive-throughs in our city that I was able to identify. With at least seven of the fifteen drive-through establishments being within one mile of our neighborhood streets. Uh we can do better for our city to support our neighborhood and to support the city-state admission of community development by promoting activities and events in the city of Westminster to increase tourism to the community. I've attended many of the city's events such as the Oyster Stroll Fall Festival, Flower and Jazz Festival. These events are enjoyable, safe, well organized, and highlight our local businesses. While I realize that all business and community partnerships, even with larger chains and companies are valuable, it is events like these that highlight the unique spirit of our community and local businesses in our state and draw attention. Many of these small businesses are sprinkled throughout our downtown area, and in the spirit of that, it would be great to see more local businesses along Route one forty in your neighborhood. A bakery or a bagel shop similar to our beloved Rare Opportunity Bake House or Jeannieburg would be a welcome addition to the parcel of land that is in question near our neighborhood. A coffee house or bistro would also be a welcome addition. It would be uh great to support local agro tourism with a farm stable type restaurant or bistro, even a pop-up farmer's market. Other cities in Maryland offer for a test kitchen for local makers testing the market. It's a unique opportunity for the city to promote and support invested residents in our community. Uh for the city and county to continue forward progress and enhance growth and development, there needs to be supportive relationships fostered with residents, both current and prospective. We are a small, unique community surrounded by some newer and larger developments and commercial property, and we are not simply asking, but we are begging to proceed with mindfulness and caution over dollar signs with additional commercial and business development in our area. It seems our neighbors have been stuck playing defense for far too long with additional residential and commercial developments around us that have caused significant harm and danger to our streets with traffic and some ill-suited development without remediation or appropriate considerations for our neighborhood. So we need your support. Mindful and thoughtful decisions need to be made about better suited businesses and better usage for our neighborhood with a desired opportunity to keep our local and more neighbor friendly. Um or at the very least, a business that will not draw so much additional thoroughfare traffic and create additional safety issues. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're all welcome. Me? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kristen Aldrich. I live at five two four Willow Avenue, Westminster, Maryland, six months ago. So about six years ago, I was in front of the same council, begging them not to rather have a cedaribrance in front of my neighborhood on concerns of traffic and, and crime and increased stuff. And at the time, I was pregnant with my daughter. And spreading that she's came with us today to further protest this potential Chick-fil-A restaurant coming into our neighborhood. Um we have, we straighten up the concern regarding traffic. Our neighborhood is small. It's wonderful. The traffic has gone a little worse since the pandemic. Um but overall, it's a wonderful place to raise a child. It's safe for her to be in the front yard. It's safe for her to be in the backyard. It's not crazy noisy. You can see the stars at night. I worry that this restaurant coming in bringing three thousand cars a day. Can you imagine the traffic? Would you want that traffic in your neighborhood? Would you want the potential crime that that could bring into your neighborhood? No one wants that. And also our home values. I worry about that traffic would do to our home values. They're going to tank. That would be so unfair. Please put that down. I'd like that city to consider its members, the people who live in that neighborhood and consider that we don't want a giant fast food restaurant there. We want something small, if anything goes in there. Something that's not going to harm our community, but if you protect the chances.
Thank you very much. Who else? Yes, sir.
Um my name is Bo Man. I live at seven forty Old Baltimore Road, uh directly across from the one and only proposed entrance to the Chick-fil-A. Um so yeah, I'm here today to voice my concern over Chick-fil-A being built across the street from my home, along with my fellow neighbors, I feel. Although, as though our streets are already overran with traffic. Um we've long been used as a cutthroat. Uh to Old Westminster Pike, like they stated earlier, I mean, they're avoiding two red lights on one forty. Um it's already extremely difficult uh getting in and out of my own driveway. Um and when I do get in and when I do get in and out of my own driveway, there's normally somebody whipping around and hawking. Um I just feel like that's bad and additional three thousand cars every day directly across from my own driveway. And how am I supposed to even get to my home? Yeah, I mean, I have a three-year-old son. He's just not allowed in the front yard already, so this poor traffic is just a terrible idea for a small community.
Thank you. Do you want else?
Steve Brass. I live at seven thirty-three Old Baltimore Road. And my driveway will, with, with the plans that I've seen, my driveway uh comes right out to where the uh I'm not even clear if it'll be a roundabout or an intersection, or if there'll be a light there. But that is right where, like, right as you come out of there, it's, I'm going to be dealing with all the traffic that goes into that business and out of that business. Um I would like to see some action taken. Uh some backup, some help, um fighting this any way you can. I, I, I don't think it's really going to be conducive living somewhere where I'm going to have to deal with lights, noise. Um it's already a risk to my life to check my mail. I know that sounds a little excessive, but my mailbox is across the street and I, I mean, I can't, I can't, I mean, I have to be very careful when I go to check just the mail. So I can't really see three thousand cars a day being any help to that. And I'm not sure this proposed market street, if the city's even in charge of that, or if that's a county project. But I mean, I'd like to see if there's anything in the budget to put up uh barriers for sound with that, that street market. This proposed market street going up, barriers for sound, uh and maybe even endcaping Baltimore Road. Yeah.
No, not after we've touched away the polls, but now.
Well, for anything helps, we do something to save our community.
Thank you. You also should hear. Yes, sir.
Uh I'm Nathaniel Burton, uh at five oh four Locust Ave. I'm with my wife, she's going to Columbia. In agreement with our neighbors here, they're in opposition to Chick-fil-A going in there. We're not in disagreement entirely about any development going in, but as Jenny mentioned, we want something suited for the community, but we also need the traffic problems. The traffic with Stonegate has just gone up and up and as they expand that community. We're on Locust Ave, the second street in from Old Baltimore, so we get all of the traffic of all those cars cutting from Stonegate and other areas off Old Westminster down our street to get to one forty. As well as all of that traffic going down Old Baltimore, it's just fifty feet away from our community. Um we are going to be petitioning the county for a traffic problem setting on my neighborhood. We've already uh received over a dozen signatures from residents of our street. We think that is a long overdue. The last numbers I can find were from two thousand eleven, where our street already had fifteen hundred cars a day. Um I, I've got to imagine that that number is double or triple or even worse than that today. Um and imagining three, three thousand cars from Chick-fil-A, that's, that's a line almost eight miles long from where that is. All the way past our quarter, we're in a lineup, three thousand cars. Our neighborhood is not the appropriate location for that specific development. Um it will do more harm to our neighborhood and the community as a whole, putting it in that location than other potential options. We'd like to express our uh opposition to that and work with you to come up with solutions and help solve some of these outstanding issues that we've already. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Silver. I live on five thirty-eight Locust Ave. So we're on the other end of it. Um you kind of live right over the crest of the hill, so it's already dangerous there. They have tried to pull out. Uh these are people that are just driving through the neighborhood to get to their houses on the street. There's people that are driving through to come through and they don't obey the speed limit. Uh they're, they are being dangerously. So it's not, or not only are we adding more traffic, we're adding more traffic with people that don't really care about our day to day, right? They're there to get their Chick-fil-A families and that's the end. Uh we've got a two-year-old daughter, daughters, you've probably all heard of this, right? And it's scary. It's scary to, to have her just getting out of the car already, and we're talking about adding a ton of traffic. Uh so I think it'd be important to do those traffic studies before the decision for made to look into speed limits to see if there's alternative routes. Um again, I just need to report you guys to really do the due diligence. Uh I think it's great for our, our community to put businesses like Chick-fil-A in. Um I think their business model is good. I think it's good for our community to have that type of business ownership, but not there.
Thank you.
I'd like to also speak, um I'm his wife, the Phyllis Silver, five thirty-eight Locust Ave. And he was, well, we just moved there last twenty twenty-two, two years ago, and one of my biggest things when we were looking to buy a house was not to be on a busy street. That was my biggest thing. Like, we want to have kids, we want to have family. We expect to stay here for a good minute, you know? So for the potential of a Chick-fil-A or something of that high volume nature, you're just not going to do it for me. We have, like I said, our daughter, we have our dog. He was very well-trained lab that we allow out in front with us to do our different things and keep staying right by our side. And there's been so many times, like, he has been like, I, I just get scared for her. I'll turn away for one second if she's up at the street. Or when I've driven into my, my um driveway to just back in. I'm taking up a good half of the drive, the road, sure, but people are literally so close to hitting me. And like I said, we've been there for two years and they're already having these issues. So I could not imagine, could not imagine having three thousand plus cars. Texas Roadhouse is about to do a huge remodeling, take over, um let's see, um where Caples is down on one forty. So they're going to apparently take that entire hill out, move down Texas Roadhouse. Why can't they take over Texas Roadhouse's location? I feel like that'd be a lot better so then, yes, they don't have the issue with the traffic violation that they have at Chick-fil-A currently. They can be up on that hill, still close to one forty, but they don't move, they can move there. They don't have to move into our neighborhood. There's, you know, there's an alternative to where they could go. Our input is just not, it's not this, it's not see.
Susan Wright from five nineteen Willow Avenue. I just want to say, we moved into our house in two thousand three. And I remember saying to my sister, it's like living in Mayberry, our, me, kids were out on their bikes. My son could play with Fosse and street with his friends. And now, you know, these are my neighbors across the street. It's scary with the people that cut through there. They don't obey the twenty-five uh speed limit. The other thing with, and Bresnikas coming off of what is now going to be Market Street, but in fact is Old Baltimore Road, is when the light turns red for one forty, and I know there could be different traffic patterns. But at this point, traffic gets backed up. People coming out of Truist are stuck there. They're, you know, worming their way in and out, so I agree, a traffic study definitely needs to be conducted. Thank you.
William Wake at five twenty-three Willow. Seems like Willow Avenue was well represented. Susan said my boys used to play over the street where I live. The house has been in the family since the mid-sixties, and I've been there, we've been there for twenty-eight couple of years. Um, s- some of the things I haven't heard was, like, the amount of trash that's going to be brought into the, people eat their cans, they're gonna throw it out the window, that's what they do. Um, but the other thing, because our streets are so straight, and you can almost see from one end to the other, they make nice drag strips. And, no offense, when I called law enforcement, which wasn't the city, um, they weren't willing to do anything till a child got hit. I called, and they said, uh, we can't do anything until something happens, I said, well, what if I'm like Otis from, uh, Mayberry and throw rocks at cars? Well, I wouldn't suggest that, but, uh, and I get it, but we're having a hard time getting control with where we're at, now we're adding more cars and just more stuff. That'll be more out of control, so, thank you.
Thank you. Who else? All right, well, thank you all for coming, it was very interesting to hear all this, and I appreciate you making the time to come and share this with us. And it's, it's happening here, and, uh, so, you know, we, we'll make sure, any actions not taken, or any, any events that occur, we'll be well publicized.
Thank you, Mr. President, if you take in touch, and get in touch with me, or any of the other ones, and, uh, email to guys, and we'll sort of submit anything for each one, so.
Thank you. All right, well, that includes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting is Monday, September eighth, like, sixth, we got, we got a virtual meeting.
Thank you.